Everyone, to the October 10 City Council Work Session. We have Councilor Zelenka on the phone. Councilor Ortiz is out of town. Councilor Pryor is out of town. So we've got a relatively small number of us sitting around the table, or at least smaller than usual.
We are a quorum.
But we are a quorum and we're about to do our work. So.
Do we have music today?
Welcome to our game show. I'm sorry, wrong answer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Kristi Hammett, Central Services Director, sitting in on behalf of City Manager John Reese and Assistant City Manager Sarah Medary, who are attending a conference and more importantly, they're to accept an award for Assistant City Manager. That's very well deserved. Today, we're going to start off our meeting with Jan Bowman, our Community Relations Manager. She's going to provide us a quick update on Eugene at 150.
Thank you, Kristi. And thank you, Council, for just a few minutes of your time. I just wanted to call your attention, you know, we've been working on Eugene at 150, Eugene's 150th Birthday Celebration over the last few months, and we've had a number of activities and events going on. We're pretty excited about the broad range of things that have happened and the amount of involvement that we've gotten. This week ago, Sunday, this supplement was in the register guard. They did a really nice job of, there's a lot of really fun and interesting stories in here. And on the back is my cheat sheet of activities that I wanted to just remind you all about. But the big birthday celebration is Saturday, October 20th, and that's coming right up. And I hope that you all will be able to be present and be involved. It starts out with a public art dedication of Judd Turner's big, beautiful blue heron sculpture at 13th and Alder. It's a joint project between the city and the university and the Duck Store. And there will be a marimba band and a poet and lots of fun things going on there. We'll have a procession from there, bikes and pedestrians down to the bike path and over to the park. The birthday party itself is in Skinnerbutte Park, just outside of the Campbell Center there. And that'll begin at about 1:15 PM. We'll have a fun band, the Sugar Beats. We'll have a reprise of Fred Craft's Radio Redux presentation about Eugene history, which was fun. It included the city manager and the mayor and the police chief and some other actors. It was very fun that we did this summer. And we will have birthday cake and sing happy birthday to Eugene. We'll be including some of our major community partners with us. We've invited them, or are inviting them, to join the mayor and you all onstage to sing happy birthday and offer them some cake. And it would be really wonderful for you to be there. I'll send you an email and you can let me know about your availability. It'd be great to have your help in greeting those partners. Great to have help of some of you if you'd like to in presenting. Then we're giving cake to the public who attend, so it would be fun to have you help serve cake. And I think it'd be really great to have your involvement. That same day, there's also a tour of historic homes in Skinnerbutte. There's another event on the 17th. I think the mayor is participating in that a community volunteer has put together at the Skinnerbutte Cabin. It's a historic cancellation and postcard taking place at the Skinnerbutte Cabin with some historic characters, actors, and that'll be a really fun event. And there's just really actually sort of too many things to mention all in just a couple of minutes. But there's an iPhone app coming out soon that highlights historic places in Eugene. One of the things that's not even listed on here is we've been working to create some videos for school-aged kids that talk about some of Eugene's history and working to get those available to schoolteachers, just some short fun videos. They'll be posted on the website. So there's just a lot going on. And I wanted to make sure that you all were aware and hope that you can participate, especially on the 20th.
Jan, I just want to say thank you for all the work. I've been watching the little snippets on KVal. They've been really fun and really nice little vignettes of the history of our community. And I just really appreciated this chance for us all to get a better understanding of our history and really celebrate our city. So thank you very, very much for all the work.
Thank you.
And everybody else that's been involved.
It's been a lot of fun. And right, people from all across the city have really pushed in.
Thank you. Any questions or anything? Yes, Pat?
I love the picture on page two of this. If you look down the street there, Willamette Street, to the butte in the background, not a single tree on the butte.
I know.
We planted those trees, didn't we?
Pretty interesting. Yeah, I've learned a lot. It's been really fun.
And they grew. What about that?
Well, figure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we turn from that fun stuff to a little bit more serious discussion. And first up on our work session today is an ordinance concerning unruly gatherings.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite Lieutenant David Nat and Neighborhood Services Program Manager Mike Kennison to lead us in this presentation.
Are we doing this up over here? You want to come down here, Pat? Just move in.
I'm Michael Kennison of Neighborhood Services and I'm here with Lieutenant David Nat to talk to you about proposed social host ordinance. We also have Jerry Lids from our City Attorney's Office here with us to answer any legal questions. And we have Municipal Court Judge Allen with us here as well to address any questions related to the fee structure for the ordinance. Before I jump right into talking specifics, I thought it'd be good to step back a minute and remind ourselves how we got here. We were here about six months ago, if you recall, and we presented kind of our first draft of the ordinance. We got some really good feedback here and we also heard some concerns from the public. And so staff went back and made a number of changes that we'll identify and talk through with you today that we think were responsive to those concerns. Today, we're, in addition to kind of hearing from you, your response to the ordinance as currently written, we're asking Council to move this item forward to a public hearing. And we've been working with Mayor Piercy and Councilor Zelenka in finding dates for the public hearing in action that are convenient to all the stakeholders involved. This effort is one of the results of the Neighborhood Livability Working Group. I think everybody here is probably familiar with that initiative. It's been ongoing since spring of 2010. It's been an effort that has involved multiple stakeholder interests that are concerned, involved with, have a role with neighborhood livability in the campus area. That's the city, of course. Our university partners, students, property owners, managers, our Neighborhood Association representatives as well. And that group is considered a variety of approaches, a variety of strategies to help address campus area livability. So this is just one of those strategies that we're trying to move forward. It involves a broad spectrum of approaches. And so on one end, we have initiatives that are focused more on education and kind of positive reinforcement for the behavior that we're looking for. But we also are looking at creating tools that will have some effect on the enforcement end as well. And what we've learned in studying this issue for quite some time is that those communities that are having effect at dealing with the issues of these, the party environment around the campus areas have a number of tools in their toolbox. There are always effective law enforcement tools in that mix that have clear repercussions. And it takes everybody in the community to have some skin in the game and a commitment to actually contributing towards the effort. Social host ordinances are not something new. This is not something that we created. There are social host laws now in the books in 150 cities and counties in 27 states. So they're quite, being quite commonly used. They focus on the root of the problem. They are targeting individuals responsible for allowing unruly parties to occur or those that allow them to continue to occur chronically. They recognize the real costs to the community of responding to these events by providing a civil penalty for recovery of cost for responding. So that would be police, fire, emergency personnel. And there's evidence exists that social host laws can be effective. There's research that's showing that they are effective when combined with other efforts to address the behaviors that we are concerned with. Talk a little bit about the problem. You know, we talk about this often as a nuisance problem and it's in, that word nuisance is in the title of the ordinance. But really, the raucous parties, the binge drinking associated with those parties, those activities are a serious public health and safety issue as well. So it's worth noting that. And that folks that aren't legal drinking age get their alcohol off-campus and off-campus residences. And that's shown to be true in national studies and as well as a fall 2011 survey that was done at the U of O of freshmen and underage transfer students. Seventy percent indicated that they were getting alcohol at off-campus residences. That compares to, I think, a national average of 41%. Alcohol abuse is frequently a common element in cases of sexual assault of teens and college students. Binge drinking, a typical activity at out-of-control parties, is a real serious health issue. And last academic year, we had 86 alcohol poisoning calls that impacted youth up to age 25. And seven-
Is that my, I'm sorry?
Sorry?
How many?
Eighty-six. Seventy-eight of those were from the near campus area. We have been fortunate. I don't think we've had a death from alcohol poisoning, but other communities have. And then those attending parties are, we need to remember that they're often victims of crime. Some maybe not so serious. A lot of property crime occurs, but actually a lot of serious crime occurs at these parties. So there's a kind of a predatory element that is there and, you know, fights up to sexual assaults are not uncommon. We know that this is a growing public nuisance impacting our campus area neighborhoods, but it's also impacting all the community. So if you look at the map up there, that's kind of a, it's a hotspot map. It shows you the 1,209 complaints for loud parties that were received for the 2011, 2012 academic year. This is where we had a willing complainant, someone who was willing to be a witness for that event. And as you can see, they're distributed throughout the community, but they really are concentrated around the campus, disproportionately around the campus area. So 530 or 44% of those calls occurred within the campus area. This is a very conservative estimate, kind of maybe the tip of the iceberg, so to speak, because we received over 700 additional calls for loud party complaints that were anonymous. So we didn't really count those because we haven't really verified, but you can assume that certainly a percentage of those were real events occurring. We're also noticing that there's, that the trend is increasing in terms of the chronic nature of the problem. Those addresses that actually were having repeated offenses are loud party complaints for. We had 22 properties with four or more complaints in the 2011, 2012 academic year, and that's up from six from the previous year. And if you talk to folks that live in the campus area, they will tell you that the problem is getting really untenable for them. It feels to them, their perception is that it is getting worse. It is no longer a weekend event or a football weekend event. Now, these events are occurring throughout the year and any number of days during the week. And there's a number of other problems other than just the fact that there's a loud party keeping you awake that is associated with the nuisance party issue. Property damage folks are experiencing, drunken young folks relieving themselves in folks' property, litter, and folks reporting that they feel threatened and intimidated by groups that are wandering the neighborhood that have been drinking alcohol. And so we're hearing from residents more and more that people are talking about actually moving away from these neighborhoods. It's costly. It's a significant cost to our police resources to address the issue. So our, the cost of, the annual cost for last fiscal year for our Party Patrol was approximately $85,000. And the existing tools that we have that were designed to deal with this issue are not entirely effective. So we have a first response ordinance that this ordinance will replace. But the way that ordinance was crafted, the thresholds are set pretty high before penalties would be, go into effect. And it doesn't address property owner accountability at all. So we think the social host ordinance would be a more effective tool. And then finally, before I turn it over to David, is to just want to clarify a number of, some misconceptions that we've heard about the ordinance. First is that the ordinance does not target a particular population or area in our community. So this would apply equally to everyone throughout the city of Eugene. It does not prohibit responsible parties. We recognize that folks, young and old, want to have social gatherings. And all the ordinance is requiring is that you do it legally. In fact, you have to actually be in violation of two existing laws before the social host violation would be in effect. It does not hold roommates responsible who are not actively involved with the unruly party. We know we heard some concerns that innocent folks might be caught up in this. And we've tried to craft something that would make it clear that only those really that are responsible for that event occurring would be held accountable. It does not require eviction of tenants. So the social host ordinance does not regulate the landlord-tenant relationship or landlord-tenant law. And it holds property, it does not hold property owners accountable until a property becomes a nuisance due to repeated disturbances. So we really recognize that property owners can't be, aren't expected to control everything that goes on every day at the properties under their control. So the ordinance is crafted in a way that we've set a very high threshold for repeated offenses before there would be some accountability for property owners. David?
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for your time this afternoon. I'm going to briefly outline the key elements of the ordinance and I'm going to speak to some of your concerns that were related to those and the first time you heard this ordinance. Key elements of the ordinance are a citywide focus stemming on, focusing on illegal behavior stemming from alcohol-fueled unruly parties. Again, the ordinance focuses on the people who facilitate and organize these parties and allow them to occur on properties. Citations issued, the maximum fine will not exceed $1,000. And a second citation, a person is charged for the actual cost of response, and that's a city response to the issue. It could be police, fire, public works for street signs removed, debris removal, any of that type of charge would be considered in those responses if it's linked to the unruly gathering. The property owners would be notified at any point in time when a citation is issued. So whoever the owner of the property is would be notified that a citation has been issued to somebody at that location. And on the fourth citation at the same address, the property owner is charged for the actual response. And that's of the fourth response, the actual response on the fourth citation. And that actual cost is the same thing as defined by the party host, police response, fire response, public works. So the definition of an unruly gathering is five or more people, the unruly gathering, there has to be alcohol presence, and two or more of the following illegal behaviors have to occur. If there are any of those current crimes or violations that you have questions about, I'm not going to go through and define them all for you, but if you'd like a definition, I'm ready to give that to you at this point. If you have any questions about what any of those mean?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
What's disorderly conduct that isn't one of those other things?
What I'm going to do, Counselor Taylor, is I'm going to read you the definition that a police officer's going to have at the scene, okay? It's not the entire ordinance. It's the core elements of disorderly conduct. With intent to cause public inconvenience or annoyance or recklessly creating the risk thereof, a person engages in fighting or violent behavior or makes unreasonable noise or disturbs any lawful assembly or obstructs vehicular or pedestrian traffic or congregates with others and refuses to disperse when ordered to do so. Okay?
Thank you. But several of those others are included in that, then?
Correct. A lot of them cross over. Yes, ma'am.
What I wondered was, what does that cover that's not?
It covers, it covers some of those that are individually listed as well as violations or crimes. Disorderly conduct is fairly broad in that sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any others? Okay. Next slide, please. Concerns we heard, to address this slide, I'd like to call forward Presiding Municipal Court Judge Allen to explain the discussions related to fines and how they're assessed.
Welcome, Judge.
It's difficult to tell you exactly what the fine's going to be for any particular case because there's so many variables. You don't know whether they have prior convictions or not, whether they're alcohol-related convictions. You don't, you don't know whether the officer's going to, how many citations the officers are going to give them. I suspect that most of these people will come in with a noise disturbance and this added on top of it. So you're going to look at the overall penalty for both. You know, basically, I know I'm dodging the question, but what I do when I get something like this is we establish a presumptive fine, which we used to call bail, which is an amount that you can post and generally not have to appear and have forfeited, and that's the end of the case. But you don't have to do that. Most people come to court. And then if they enter a guilty plea, we have a fine schedule that is suggested but can be deviated from by me or by any of the other judges there and sometimes are and should be, just looking at the individual situation. Obviously, the goal here is to get to the landlord if you can't get the problem solved. What I would look at would be the overall penalty to basically what are usually students and whether, and I appreciate the fact that the Council wants to have an additional penalty. I think that's what you're saying by passing this ordinance, an additional penalty in addition to the noise disturbance and also very often allowing or furnishing alcohol to minors goes along with that. But if the, I presume EPD is going to issue the citations they always have and add this to the list. And so that's something I take into consideration. Just as a side comment, you know, we've been frustrated about this for a long time. I mean, the amount of assets and expense that we've been putting into this problem, which continues to grow, and I say "we" as a community, is very frustrating and distressing, I think, to all of us. But, you know, I don't think we're going to get anywhere till seated right next to me here is somebody from the University of Oregon. And that's, that's the real hammer here. When your education and your ability to stay in school is at risk, and your parents are going to hear about this, that's going to have a lot more effect than what I'm going to find them. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mike?
Can you be more clear about the university's role there?
Well, they've never been interested in being involved. And under prior administrations, the idea has been that, well, if we, if we do something in addition to what the court does, if that's some sort of double penalty, well, you know, if I'm picked up for driving under the influence, I'm going to have the penalty and I'm also going to lose my job. I guess that's an additional penalty. But it kind of comes with the territory. If you're a student, in my view, you've got a certain responsibility to this community. And you are a member, albeit temporary, of this, of this community. And I think you've got an obligation to behave and to give people peace and quiet that live in the neighborhood. Many of these people lived in the neighborhood when it was quiet, and then somebody built a big apartment house next door and things changed. So the argument that, well, they've been, they don't have to live in this area, it kind of comes with the territory, really falls on deaf ears to me, anyway. So I just think the university needs to be a part of this, solution to this problem.
Thanks.
George?
Well, I'm just curious about, you know, what some of the other university towns have done with their, evidently there's a whole bunch that have social host ordinances and kind of goes along with what you just said, Judge Allen, is I'm wondering, are they suggesting to the university, because I guess we can't tell them what to do, of course, but say like if somebody's done this two or three times, would expulsion, expulsion seems like that would be an option for the university would have to make that decision? Like, hey, you're causing problems with their wild parties. Seems like you don't want to be a student, really, so would just move you along until you can behave and come back? Do we know if any, if that's an option that other cities and universities have done?
There are, there are other universities that link their student conduct code to off-campus behaviors. There, I know, there's not one approach in terms of what behaviors trigger and what the penalty is. I mean, there's a whole spectrum about what that could be. Here locally, the U of O's had some discussions about student conduct code in the past, and there hasn't been, within the committee that has kind of assigned that, to consider that, there hasn't, hadn't been the support. That conversation is still ongoing. It's been a lively discussion within the Livability Working Group and with our U of O partners. And we continue to talk about that in other, in other forums. So we'd have to ask the university where they are with that. I think none of us can really speculate here, but I think the conversation is still happening.
Okay. Well, I just had another question. It's on the first page, which is page 87, 67. About halfway down in the second paragraph, it says, "This costly approach, the one that we're using now, does not provide a sufficient deterrent, and potential offenders have learned how to avoid the most significant sanctions." Can someone speak to that? How have they learned how to avoid the sanctions that already exist? How are those avoided?
Well, the first response ordinance, there's a couple of, there's several weaknesses there. It has a fairly, requires a fairly high number of individuals to be present. I think it's 25 or more. It doesn't, unlike the social host ordinance, it doesn't follow the individual. So if you created a disturbance at one address and you relocate and you create a disturbance at another address, it, it kind of resets the clock for you, whereas with the social host ordinance, the, if you get, if you violate the ordinance and, at one time, and you move three months later and you violate it again at a different, or it doesn't matter where you're located. It's, it's counting the number of occurrences within a 12-month period. And so folks have learned how to do that. And it, and then as I mentioned before, there isn't that added pressure of, if I continue that behavior, I might get crosswise with my landlord, the property owner, as well. Because with the first response ordinance, there, you don't have that repercussion. Is David, anything to add to that?
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. But it also, yeah, and I think that's the way it should be. I mean, as part of, one of the components. But it also, like, you're kind of holding the landlord responsible too for, wow, you've developed a laxity here that, you know, like, it might even be different people, but this is known as the party house. Evidently, they get passed on to the next generation of, a few, a few places. Most landlords are totally responsible, but there's a few where this is the party house in the neighborhood and I'm passing it down to the, you know, the next person in line.
We certainly agree that, we think that most folks in a rental community are very responsible. They, they're good neighbors. They're good, a part of the community. They don't want to have to deal with trying to find new tenants. And we get that. It's just, it only takes a few bad apples to really spoil the bunch. Now, I just wanted to add too, that the university has really been an active partner and is continuing to be an active partner in working on this issue. There's a number of different things that the U of O is leading on this issue and that, and we- been partnering with to try to get a handle on the issue. Student conduct code hasn't moved forward yet, but that's not to say that the UVO isn't actively trying to help us address livability in the campus area.
Oh, thank you. All right. Yeah, I think that was most of my questions, but I just want to point out for people that are watching or listening is that most of the problems are happening around campus, West University, South University, but this is for the whole town, because these type of things happen all over town. The epicenter, of course, is the university, but the map showed that they're happening all over the place, and it happened in my old neighborhood quite frequently, and we weren't really that close to the university. We were over a mile away, and it was a persistent problem. So it's not just targeting students. This is for anybody that allows their party to get out of hand.
Right.
Thanks.
Eric, can I get in the queue?
Yes, you can, Allen, and I've got Pat and Mike will be in the next round, and I'll put you in this round. But before I do that, I wanted to ask, did you want it, George?
No.
I'm sorry, I had to see you.
I just want to know, we're not quite through all our points. Some of your questions we may be getting to, and David, so I'm wondering if we couldn't kind of maybe finish that piece and then see.
That's what I was going to ask, Mike, and what I wanted to ask Pat or anybody else is, if you have a question for Judge Allen specific, then this is the time to do that. If you don't, then let's hold off and finish the presentation. So if you have a question for Judge Allen, let's do that now, and then we'll go back to you, okay? Betty.
That's what my question so far, the judge.
I'm sorry that you just signaled to me, Pat, that you didn't have a question for Judge Allen.
No, I do have a question for Judge Allen. I was, no, if we were just going to move along, I was fine with that, but I do have a question specifically.
Be careful, we'll have a unruly gathering here.
Oops.
So let me just specify then. You have a question for Judge Allen. You have a question for Judge Allen. Allen, do you have a question for Judge Allen?
Yes, I do.
All right, so we're going to do that first.
And, ma'am, mine is all of them.
Okay. All right, so everybody has a question. Okay, Judge, you're on. All right, Pat, and then Betty. Go ahead.
Okay. Judge, you'd mentioned that we're not going to get anywhere until the UVO is sitting beside, and I guess my question is, do we have a record of the times the UVO has been approached or be asked to, for instance, sit beside Judge Allen at a table like this? And have they actually said, no, we're not going to participate?
Have we asked the UVO whether to participate?
Well, Judge Allen stated that we're not going to move forward, we're not going to get anything accomplished, I believe were the words, until the UVO is sitting here beside me. And I guess the question is, has the UVO been asked, and have they said, no, we will not come and participate in this kind of a discussion?
Not in the conversations I've been in. I don't know what Judge Allen's experience is. We certainly have had those conversations with other UVO reps that are involved some over here today with the Livability Working Group and have had frank discussions about that issue, so.
I believe it's been brought up in the past. I don't know if anybody sits in the room that could give you a tally of the conversations, because the people, the stakeholders and the people that have been working on the issue have changed over the years. Currently, the -- it's being brought forth currently and has in the last 30 days been an area of significant discussion, hopefully moving forward at all levels. It's kind of one of those things, I believe, that the people at the highest levels in both the city organization and the university need to agree as a meaningful way to, as one of the approaches, to move forward before somebody sits next to Judge Allen, who would be at his same level, and then I would have somebody at my level sitting next to me. So I think the vision would be is to have the highest level come to an agreement that that's one of the, and in addition to this ordinance is another approach that we can take to help this issue in the neighborhoods.
That covers it for me. Thank you. I think that we are moving forward with the conversation with the UVO to make certain that the UVO understands, and I'm sure they do, that their participation is essential to making this a safer community, particularly for the people, some of whom are sitting in the audience, who live ongoing next to the campus.
Yes, sir.
You know, between the third and fourth quarter and every game at the University of Oregon, a large campus party is memorialized with the, and they play the entire toga party from Animal House. So it's, you know, it's almost an iconic thing, you have big parties, and that was filmed at the University of Oregon. And so the UVO, I would suspect that at some point in the not-too-distant future, this council will be talking about how the campus police force integrates with the Eugene Police Force in the specific avenue of approach. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Betty, you're next.
Ma'am, mine was for the judge as well.
You're in the next round.
Sorry, I thought you had me to apologize.
I think George Poling wanted to be in this round, too.
He's in this round. He's in this round. Allen's in this round. You're in this round. Come after that.
My question, do you think, Judge, do you think the ordinance is needed if we enforce what we already have? I thought I heard a hint from you that we don't, the ordinance won't make a difference.
Well, I think the idea of involving the landlord's a great idea. I had a case last week where people were cited, and then the landlord was notified, and this is just a one-time event, and then they were evicted. Well, as they pointed out, then they have to go out and they have to find another apartment, first, last, clean deposit. Of course, the clean deposit on the place they were in sort of disappeared, as they generally do. So it really, that was a more significant penalty, I think, than the $250 fine that I gave each of the two of them for having the party.
Well, do you think if we just had an ordinance that includes the landlord, that we could skip the rest of this?
I don't know what you mean by skip the rest of it.
Just not do the big, oh, big ordinance, just have something, a special ordinance that says a landlord should be held responsible after.
Well, I think you need all of this so you have reasonable parameters about what circumstances, in fairness to the landlord, under what circumstances is the landlord going to be responsible? How many events are there going to be, and what kind of a party are you really talking about? I mean, it says unruly gathering, but it's defined so that you have other offenses that are occurring at the same time. So I think it is a complete package, and I don't see how you would bifurcate or divide it.
I understood you to be saying that we didn't need most of this, because we already have.
No, I'm not saying that.
And do you think having the university police as a real police department will make a difference?
I think the university police department, from what I understand and from my experience with the citations that I've been receiving in court, they seem to be doing a very good job. I think a lot of us were concerned about the quality of what might happen there, but I think the hiring of Carolyn McDermott and other members of EPD was a really wise choice, and I think it's going to mesh well together, and I think it's a good development.
But it might save the city police money.
I would hope so.
Perhaps.
Yeah.
And do you think we should set a max? I'm very concerned about the fine amount. You said the judges will set it, but all judges are not alike.
No, but I give them a guideline.
They aren't all as fair as others. Do you think we should set a maximum fine?
Well, I think you always have to have in an ordinance a maximum fine, but I suspect you're not going to get there very often. You are going to have probably--
$100, I was thinking.
Sorry?
I was thinking of $100.
$100? Well, that's not going to really, then don't do it. Don't do it. It's not worth doing it.
I'll say more about that later. Okay, thank you.
Allen, you're up.
Thank you, ma'am. Just one point of clarification on the code of conduct. Myself and numerous other people have been working with the UVO on the code of conduct for years now. It's a very slow process, but it, I think, we're trying to make a new headway. We have a new president that seems interested in dealing with the issue from that perspective as well. And secondly, maybe the staff could provide the letter that goes out to complaints, that goes jointly from Pete Burns and the university, and we can get that in our packet for the public hearing. But the question I had for Judge Allen was that the fine, in the original version of this, we had a very specific regime of $500 for the first offense, $750 for the second, and $1,000 for the third, and the third one could include the landlord. And we've replaced that with fines not to exceed $1,000, which appropriately puts that in your court, Judge Allen. And I'm wondering, so the intent there was to keep ratcheting it up until we got their attention or until we got the landlord involved so that we could get their attention to create this accountability mechanism to stop this bad behavior. I'm wondering what your intent is in this regard, and if it's similar to what we had intended beforehand, and how you would approach that.
Well, as I mentioned before, they're generally going to have a citation for a noise violation, and the guideline for a first-time noise violation is $250 for every person involved. So if you have five roommates, they're each going to have that penalty. Then you're going to have furnishing alcohol to minors or perhaps their own minor in possession. If they do the minor in possession and go through the diversion program, they've got $135 in that. So $250 and $135 is 385, and if you add another, I don't really, I really haven't thought about exactly what the fine recommendation would be, but it wouldn't be $500, because I think if you add, you start getting close to $1,000, and you know, for a college student, even though I'm frustrated with them, $1,000 is a lot of money. And so I think the overall penalty, when it starts approaching $700, $800, probably gets their attention. The other thing I say to them, and we need to remember, is that the noise ordinance can be a crime. And what I say to them when they have their first one is that they should expect that the city's going to file the second one as a crime rather than a violation, and what that means is a possibility of a $500 fine and a 30-day jail sentence as a maximum penalty. So, you know, that's kind of the approach that it is now, and as I say, I think you're just adding this to the plate and increasing the penalty on the student. May be a good idea, but I don't think you want to go too overboard with it.
Thanks, Judge. No more comment, and I'll be done. Part of the campus, University of Oregon becoming a police department, we discussed this earlier at the council, part of that idea that I would like to see happen is to expand the jurisdiction for some types of offenses like minor possession disorder, chronic noise, to go beyond just the university property and into those university neighborhoods around the university. And I think that would alleviate a lot of issues with our police department being overburdened while this, and also create a stronger accountability mechanism if we have both the police departments working on these types of issues. Thanks, I'm done, ma'am.
Okay. George Poling?
I pass.
Okay, Mike?
Much of my questions around the UVO Department of Public Safety were kind of addressed with Allen and some others, but I still have this, and I'm mindful that I see several friends from the university in the audience out here, so I want to say that, of course, the city values its relationship with the university. But kind of language we're using around this is that landlords profit from having the students there renting their houses, and so holding them accountable seems like a reasonable course of action, and I would agree with that. But it's my understanding that some university policies may be adding or contributing to what we're seeing as an increase. You mentioned $85,000 this last year in response costs, and that we've been seeing an increase over the last couple of years. I know that, when I was at the university, it was a couple of years ago, but when I was there, some friends of mine and I founded a fraternity that's still there, and I got to serve on the interfraternity council and all that sort of things. We've been around this issue for a long time. And I know that recent changes to the university's policy no longer allows any partying at any fraternity houses. It's all kind of mandated in private housing. So to an extent, the university's policy has kind of pushed this into the community. So my question is, really, in your talks with the university, are they accepting their role as accountability for those sort of policy changes, and are we working towards a day when we can get them at the table, as Judge Allen mentioned?
I don't. In all the meetings that I attend related to all matters, including this one pertaining to the behavioral issues and student accountability and the alcohol abatement efforts put on by everybody, the university recognizes, everybody I deal with from the university recognizes the, what the issues are and what some of the root causes are. We have a campus that literally shuts down most nights at 5:00, and students go, and you're absolutely right, the fraternities are dry, so students go from the dorms, they walk all the way through campus into the West University. That's what happens. Is that, was that a foreseeable outcome when these policies were made? Probably not. I don't think we can point the finger at the university. I don't know. I wasn't in the position I'm in when those decisions were made. I think they are, the direct result of that is what we see currently on Friday and Saturday nights, because the fraternal organizations were built for social gatherings. They do have parties, they have drive parties, but they do have parties, they have security, they have door monitors, they follow fire code.
They're different than it used to be.
Much different. They're, the ones that I've dealt with so far this year, I had the entire executive standing on the front lawn with me, completely sober, responsible, and willing to accommodate the requirements of the city. So to say one thing, it's what happened. It's part of what happened. So I think that your assessment is part of where we're at today.
Is the university recognizing that and kind of coming to the?
Well, that's, we all hope to work with our partners to use ordinance programs and accountability measures to gain voluntary compliance by the students. I think that's the ultimate goal of everybody, to make it a safe, livable, appropriate neighborhood for everybody who lives there. And I think there is committed, everybody I've worked with at the University of Oregon is committed to that ultimate goal with law enforcement, with the courts, with city and the neighborhood. I think everybody who's involved in this is very committed to it, understands the concern. There are additional prongs that we need to work on to accomplish the ultimate goals here.
We have another topic that we need to move into rather rapidly, so let's see if we can, I'll let you finish up, and then we'll see if there's anything anybody wants to add, and then we'll see what the council wants to do. We're right ahead.
Okay. To finish up, additional concerns we heard, there's been language added to the ordinance to ensure that the innocent roommate or the person who's not encouraging, supporting, participating, or inviting others or encouraging attendance at an unruly gathering has caught up in any law enforcement efforts. This would take into account a roommate who's at the library and comes home to this event or is in Portland for the weekend and gets caught up in what occurred when they weren't there and they weren't participating in. So we've added that language to the definition of known or should have reasonably known that the event was going to occur, and then there's added language in the ordinance for an affirmative defense under that set of circumstances, and that should be in your packet, that language.
Can you clarify what that would look like?
Bear with me, I need to find the affirmative defense section. Right here, okay. So the affirmative defense is if somebody, a scenario would be, somebody wants to have their friends over to have a gathering, to watch a duck game, to watch a basketball. They want to have friends over. What happens is, we know, is the word gets out very quickly, and it's just, all it takes is an address, and then you have 300 unwanted guests on your front lawn, and your house fills up, and you have no control anymore, or you intend to do that, one or the other. So the affirmative, it's an affirmative defense to the citation issued for violation if the person who organized or hosted or facilitated an unruly gathering contacted the police as soon as any of the violations or offenses listed in the unruly gathering occurred. So if we go back to that earlier slide, and they see minors drinking, or they believe minors are drinking, or they have a fight in their front yard, or there's people spilling out into the streets blocking traffic, if they call us and say, I need your help, that's an affirmative defense to this specific violation, okay? It's not an affirmative defense to the noise or to any of the other violations, but it's a defense to this violation if they're taking a proactive approach to have law enforcement come assist them in clearing the party out. So that's the affirmative defense language that was added to the ordinance. And the final slide is, the ordinance could be applied to any commercial establishment serving alcohol. That language has not been, language addressing that has not been added to the draft of the ordinance at this point in time, but what I can tell you is that many of the issues addressed in this ordinance are included in OARs, Organ Administrative Rules, that pertain to licensed liquor establishments already. So this would be redundant legislation or redundant regulation for those establishments, because OLLCC has all their OARs that pretty much cover all this stuff already for licensed establishments. So it would be unnecessary for us to use this as an enforcement tool, because we have all those OARs to use for the enforcement side. And like I said before, to close, this ordinance is one element of a collaborative effort involving all the stakeholders related, and we've identified who those are, to make Eugene's neighborhoods more livable across the city boundaries. Thank you for your time.
Jerry, do we need a motion for this to move on to a public hearing?
I think that was one of the proposals.
There are three options there. I'm just saying that one, doesn't, none of them call-- I'm just saying that one, doesn't, none of them calls exactly for a motion and I just want to be sure that we need-
I don't believe you need a formal motion. I think staff was looking for head nods that it would be appropriate for the manager to schedule the public hearing.
Betty.
Yeah, I'd like to be in the queue.
Okay.
I think we need to hear more from landlords and, and from students. And the public, the date, tentative date for the public hearing is the nineteenth, which is a Monday before Thanksgiving, which I think is not a good time for students. And many of them leave town before Thanksgiving, a few days before, especially if they live far away. And the date of action is definite, definitely a bad time for students. So I think we should postpone, I think we need to hear more from students and from landlords, both. And I think we should postpone this till January or February.
Alan and then George. Alan?
Yeah, actually, we did change the student, accommodate students better, so I think we've accomplished that. I can only speak to the, the area around the university, university neighborhoods, although I understand it's a citywide issue. This is really, this is a livability and accountability issue. It's not about banning parties or having, or banning fun. This is, this is a, this is a, it's constructed to be very narrow and deal with a very small subset of parties that are out of control and have been for a long time, that have a huge impact on the neighborhood livability and the peace and quiet late at night. This kind of, this is, this is the eighty-twenty rule kind of on steroids, it's really the ninety-nine-one rule, that only a very small number of people are doing these bad behaviors that are, over and over again, which is creating the problem. And there are, and there's just a few of these problems each year, a few of these properties each year that are creating this, this big problem. Now, what this is doing now, and what we're doing right now, our current tools, they're just not working. There's insufficient ability to deal with this problem, as the judge said, and to create the accountability for these out of control behaviors. And I live in the Fairmont neighborhood, but I lived in the university neighborhood for twenty-eight years and I've witnessed the quality of life degrade. And for the first time in, in the time I've lived in this area, people are actually talking about leaving the neighborhoods. And that should get everybody's attention, that single families are saying, "I can't take it anymore, I need to leave," because, in part because of this problem. And so that should, I can't underscore that enough, how big of a problem that is and what the impact is and how desperate the neighborhoods are to create this accountability mechanism. I think what the staff and E P D and Lieutenant Nat and other folks have done, it, to modify this ordinance has been very good and it makes it much tighter and much more clear. And I, I think it's a tool that we need and I, but I think it's a very limited tool, but I think it's something that we need to do to improve accountability and create some livability in the neighborhoods.
Okay, George Poling?
A couple of questions first. Does Lane County or Springfield, do they have anything in place or are they studying or are they looking at doing this?
I believe Lane County already has a social host ordinance on the books for county residents.
I know, I've been retired from there almost eleven years now and I sure wish we had it back then. It would have been a lot easier for me and my two deputies on graveyard shift to handle some of these.
Sure.
The other question I have, in looking at your map, it looks like the second highest concentration is actually in my ward, which is around all the apartments there in Kinzroy area.
Yes, sir.
How does this affect a large apartment complex as far as number of occurrence in a twelve-month period?
I'm gonna let Michael handle that one.
It treats, it treats multi-unit properties the same as it would treat single-family residences, so the, 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 the tracking of offenses is by address.
So it'd be to the specific apartment then as opposed to the apartment complex?
If you had multiple, if you had multiple violations going on at the, at the same address, different events, that could count towards the, the four events in any one year.
Okay, maybe I'm not tracking, but it doesn't sound-
If you have, if you have an apartment complex, let's say Kinzroy, any apartment complex, like apartment complex A and there's ten people that live there, ten, you have ten units, okay? If apartment one, two, three, and four all get, unruly gathering citations within a twelve-month period for separate incidents, they occur, one occurs every quarter, let's say, one occurs in the first quarter, one occurs in the second quarter, and they all occur within the timeframe defined by the ordinance, then that fourth event kicks off the response fee to the property owner of that complex. So they're responsible for the behaviors that occur on that property, whether it's one tenant or four different tenants. That's how-
It's four events at the address, regardless of whether it's what units it involves.
That kind of, that kind of concerns me when you're talking to large apartment complexes like you see in Kinzroy area. I, I may want to see some changes there or wait until we hear from some of the, the people that manage or own those larger properties, because that, that is a real concern to me. You know, we started this, this time, this discussion in April, and I think that the students that are really concerned, if they want to get involved, should have gotten involved from the very start. We have a generous amount of time every Monday night for people to come and talk about anything they wish. How can we haven't been hearing from the students if they want to get involved? That's their time. And to postpone it until after the first of the year because we're going to have the public hearing on the nineteenth, which is, you know, not, not that far away, and then we're taking action before Thanksgiving, I think that's an appropriate amount of time. We've been dealing with this for years. And then to say, well, we need to postpone it till after the first of the year because the students aren't, aren't involved in it, they could have gotten involved in it from the very start. I think it's time to move it on to a, a public hearing and take action when we have it scheduled.
I'm gonna try to move this now because we do have another thing, so I'm gonna ask George to put the motion out for hearing, if you would.
Well, I, I thought we didn't need to do a motion.
Well, I, I want to do that because I know we don't all have total agreement here. So I want to be sure that we, we have, that we have our, everybody has their voice around the table.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
I move to schedule a public hearing on the matter of social host ordinance and that be on the date that is listed in our-
It says tentatively-
Virginia, I don't know if that's-
It says, it says tentatively scheduled for the nineteenth, which gives some flex-
October. All right, I move to hold the public hearing on the, the social host ordinance on October the nineteenth.
November, you, you want to use the language that they're using here, tentatively, or do you want to-
November.
I guess I don't have that language. I didn't even know that that was on there.
It's not a, it's just a option one.
Okay, move to proceed with the public hearing, tentatively scheduled for November nineteenth, two thousand and twelve.
Move.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor, please indicate.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
What, what's the, what's the reason for the word tentatively? I mean, that creates confusion in people's minds about when this is going to occur.
I agree.
Agreed.
Is there a conflict with that date?
Is there some issue with holding it on the nineteenth?
You want to take out the tentatively?
Yes.
I would prefer that, it gives certainty to public.
George, are you okay with that?
I'm fine.
He said he's fine, you're fine. Okay, they took out the tentatively. We'll come back to you if that doesn't, for some reason-
It should work.
Yes, it should work. All right, so, all those in favor, please indicate. So we've got one, two, three, four. Alan?
Yes.
Five in opposition, one, it passes, so we are-
Who's in opposition, Mayor?
Betty. All right, so we're gonna move on now. The only thing that I wanted to add before we move on is I, I understand that students could have gotten involved, but you have new students all the time, so it is, I'll call on you, Betty. So it, we do have that as, as a condition of, of students in our community. They come and they, new ones come on all the time. I'm perfectly willing to provide an opportunity, to look for some opportunities to go over on campus and have, I think it would be good for us to have to, to try to have a couple more discussions on campus with, with folks there. That's not the same as a public hearing, but I think it would be a good idea to, to try to create some opportunities for students to talk about it.
We'll work on that, Mayor.
I'd be glad to join you, Mayor.
We have an, I have an open invitation to have that conversation with the ASUO and just waiting to hear that, hear back.
And I know we've heard from the police commission that they're interested in being part of a, of having that discussion too, so Alan's interested, I'm interested, so let's see what we can do to create a little, little bit more opportunity for students to be heard from.
Absolutely, we'll follow up on that, Mayor. Just one quick thing, I also want to say, you know, the U of O has been long-term partners and has, have been very active in working with us on all of this, and so we, it's, it goes way back from the time that we started putting party ordinances together, and this is a citywide ordinance, not just the University of Oregon, so we can have a great conversation.
And Betty, you want to-
I will explain, I voted no because I think that's a, as I said before, I think it's a bad time for students. And I know it's citywide, but it's mainly students who will be involved. And students do keep changing. There is a new student body president who wants to be involved and thinks there hasn't been enough time. So I think we need, I think we need more than one hearing, actually, and we need time to, we should publish something in the Emerald about the main points of the ordinance and, and I assume the ordinance would be on, on the website too, right? We should publish something about the, listing the main points and listing, telling where they can find the entire ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, and that's the ambulance fund stabilization.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, we're back before you again today and follow up to the May Joint Elected Officials Meeting on Ambulance Transport. At that time, you heard about the condition of the fund, which is not new information. The task force was comprised of two counselors from the city of Eugene, two from the city of Springfield, two board members from the Lane Rural Fire Rescue District, and a county commissioner. They came back with three options. The first option is do nothing, which basically pushes the problem for deficit into the general fund. Obviously, the downside there is, we know the general fund of both cities is not healthy at this time. It also creates some concerns with people who live outside the cities being supplemented by the city funds. The second one was privatization of the ambulance system. The pro to that is long-term, it, it controls the costs in the distant out years. The downside is we lose firefighters on the street who are used, do a role, purpose, that ride the ambulances. In addition, there's about a one-point-three million dollar cost that we would have to find another, another way to cover if we're doing any EMS work in the field at all, and I'm talking about the first responders that arrive ahead of the ambulance. The third option that the task force carried forward was the formation of an ambulance transport district. Obviously, this would take some time, it would add to the tax rolls. There's a report that was generated by ElCog on looking at what an ambulance taxing district would look like. Those were the, the three options. There was also a previous task force that was formed-
My name? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, wait.
Few years ago, and from that, we have implemented quite a few of the recommendations, pretty much every one we could implement and then some. We've brought in a public-private partner, Rural Metro Ambulance, after we worked to change county codes to allow for that. They provide a lot of our non-emergency work, which is a better utilization, it's matching the resource with the type of, of call for service. That's helped us significantly in our capacity issues, plus it's a tool in the toolbox that we can use to help the system from a capacity standpoint, should we have more issues down the street, downstream as we keep modifying the system. We've also brought in Lifelight, which takes care of our long-distance transports, to a great extent, our critical transports. Anytime we have to take a patient from one of the hospitals here locally to Portland, we're basically out of service for six hours. By the time we get up there and do the turnaround and get back, and as you know, we have had a capacity problem within the system as well as a financial one. Another thing that we've done is we've implemented electronic patient care reports, which allows us to do same-day billing, which is critical for collections with insurance companies. Another strategy we've done is we're working with Lane Rural Fire Rescue District to make more of an urban-rural split in our service delivery areas. Right now, under I G A, they are picking up a large portion of our rural area, known as Zone Three. We anticipate joint petition probably later this year to the Board of County Commissioners to reconfigure our ambulance service area and allow them to pick up more of that, that space. When we started this process, we were actually operating in the red. We've had two years now where we've been back on the right side of the fiscal line, we're in the black. We, we should be balanced through this year and we believe we will be balanced through F Y fourteen, although we're gonna need a little bit of a, a tailwind and some luck to get there. Our costs continue to climb, our revenue has, has been challenged in the process with Medicare and Medicaid capitated payments, which has reduced reimbursement. We also have a very large percentage of Medicare and Medicaid transports in our area, higher than other areas around us, for example, like Corvallis and Bend. That was presented to you back in May as well. Another thing that we have done in our Fire Med program, we've managed to reduce our overhead by about thirty-five percent, which has allowed us to move more money directly to where we need it in the service. So we're, we're running out of rabbits in the hat. We've, we've tried very hard to streamline and adjust our system, but we're to the point without some level of policy direction for the future. We are going to, the system is going to crash. And so with that, I, we're, we're hoping, it's, it's a lot of information coming out, but I wanted to kind of bring you back up to speed, it's been a while since we've talked about this. We're hoping for some level of policy direction. The last piece I did want to share is I've made this, had the same discussion with the Springfield City Council a week ago, Monday night. They are, one of the things that came out of that group, as you know, we're working on the fire merger, they wanted to know more about how this connected back with the merger, and they're concerned with the ambulance transport district. They weren't opposed to it, but they didn't want to move in that direction if, after a merger, there was a move to push to a fire district, which that has not been decided, but that was just a piece of conversation that happened in that meeting I did want to share.
Randy, I'm sorry, we, our transition was a little rough here and sorry for all the noise and distractions and all of that. And then in addition, I just want to say for people who are watching, I've been sitting here through this whole thing and between the lights being out and the lights in the window, I'm totally blind to everybody that's in front of me, so I'm just watching these shapes out, out here. So it's been a very difficult meeting to, to navigate, and I just apologize to you for that. Tell us specifically what would be helpful to you right now.
Well, what we were hoping to have, and whether we get it at this meeting or sometime in the near future, is direction from this body of what you would like us to pursue from a financial standpoint. The fees for service are no longer going to sustain the system, and we've been hearing that for a lot of years, but we've managed to make corrections that have just pushed, you know, kicked the can a little further down the road. And we're running out of things that we can do. I mean, there's, there's three dramatically different options here. I will say that the task force met from October of last, of two thousand and eleven into May of this year. We spent more time with this task force than we did the first one, really trying to educate and give them every bit of information we could. In doing an environmental scan around the country, pretty much the systems that seem to be doing okay are the ones that have some level of revenue that's not strictly tied to fees for transport.
So why don't we try a little round robin here in terms of both questions and how, what counselors are thinking about? And I guess the only thing I would say on your behalf too is we may be seeing some change in membership around the table in the future at some point, and so it would be nice if we could give some direction before we have any, you have to put together another committee and, and bring some more people up to speed or something. So I think that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mike, can I start with you? Do you have any?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Well, I will say that I had the, the privilege to serve on the first part of that task force, but Andrea really carried the load from the council standpoint of that service. Things going on in my life kept me from a lot of those meetings, and I'm sorry, I wasn't able to attend more of them. I have not ever been a fan of creating a special district. My challenge with that is the governance and how decision-making would be arranged between this body and between any body that was put in place that would need to be there for the sake of the taxing authority. I'm not closed to the idea, I'm certainly, I, I know it works in many places, and I know, you know, Beaverton, T V, Highway area, you know, I, I know that Twelton Valley has a, a district, and I know it works in many places. My, my challenge with it is that I, I believe that fire, fire- My, my challenge with it is that I believe that fire and police are our core services and I'm much more instinctively have the desire to give it general fund support than I would to create a special district if that was necessary. As a core service, I think that's the thing you prioritize in budget first. So that's kind of my reflexive position, but again, I'm certainly open to a discussion of how we, how we would create a model that didn't have conflicts in governance between us and Springfield or between us and another board, for example.
Thank you, Counselor. If I could just say, Mayor, too, one of the reasons there's three options instead of a series of recommendations was there was not complete agreement amongst the task force members. Different members saw different options as being better than others.
Matt, you have any thinking about this?
Well, Chief Groves, you mentioned that other jurisdictions have different funding mechanisms in place beyond, beyond fees for service. And do we have a report on that someplace as to which jurisdictions are using which fees?
We did not do an all-inclusive report on that. We did talk a little bit with some of the, during the task force meetings about some of the areas that are doing that. Like I said, ElCog did a study on it. One of the jurisdictions in our own county is Western Lane Ambulance. They have both fees for service, they also have fire med, and they have a taxing authority that they have in the district. Nevertheless, they are very interested in what we're doing and one of the reasons the report was generated by ElCog were that there was other jurisdictions that were interested in looking at what this could do for the system.
If we were to presume a consolidation of districts, fire districts, is there another jurisdiction regionally that is roughly the same size as ours that is using additional fees beyond fees for service that you're aware of?
The only one, there's only eight ASAs, ambulance service areas in Lane County and part of those are just little pieces where, you know, Corvallis comes down one direction, Lincoln County comes in. The closest that we have is the Lane Rural Fire Rescue District and they are using part of their district funds to support their ambulance service, but they're not our size.
And I'm sorry, I kind of didn't make my question real clear. Outside of, outside of Lane County, are there any other jurisdictions that we looked at that are providing a fee, something other than fee for service in terms of?
We have, we have seen those, I can't, I can't state what they are off the top of my head, I'd have to go back and look, but I know we've looked beyond even the Oregon boundaries to try to see who's doing it and that's, it's, I can't remember which those are.
And I did not serve on the task force, so I, you know, I suppose I can look up the minutes, but for instance, Tuolatin?
Tuolatin has actually a private ambulance company that serves them, Metro West, and then the fire service is provided under a district.
George, you got any thoughts?
I think I have more questions than that.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm looking at option number one, it says do nothing. Well, that's untenable, I mean, we'll see what happens if we do absolutely nothing, but the option I think would be rather that Springfield and Eugene would have to put in more money from the general funds, figure out some way to do that, and that's really tough, I mean, because.
Yes.
We get less revenues every year, too, so, I mean, that, it really doesn't mean do nothing, it means like try to, try to use general funds, I guess.
That's what, that's what it is. What you're seeing here, this, this is the verbiage that came out of the task force.
I see.
And, you know, it was, it was an elected officials-driven process, but that was the intent behind do nothing, meaning, well, we aren't going to take any action, we'll just have to supplement with the general fund. But you're absolutely correct, there are very serious problems with that as well, as you know, with the declining general fund revenue.
And then, and then number three, the transport district, I think you mentioned that, that ElCog was working on a model for this.
They.
They had another report, but was this part of that report?
They actually, they did a model on what it would take to form a taxing district. That's, that's what it is. There was a report on, on what you would have to do and it talked a little bit about compression and some of the issues around the county. They were looking at it for the full county. In fact, we have Megan Banks here from ElCog, if you have specific questions about the methodology that went into that report.
Well, I guess I just need to find out and then, and read it, I haven't, I've not read the report, I'd like to. So I'm assuming that that money would come from some kind of a property tax levy?
That was the assumption that was used, correct.
Was there any, even a preliminary guess, guesstimate about what that would cost the property owners?
I want to say it was in the 40 cent range.
Well, I, I caveat it by saying it was from 2009.
Right.
Right.
I want to repeat that.
Forty cents per thousand.
That might be low, but that was, it was in that range, forty some odd cents per thousand in $2,009.
Okay, great. Gee, all right, yeah, no, I don't have any suggestions, I wish I had a solution, but I don't.
Alan?
I think he went away.
Alan, did he leave?
No, I didn't hit you off of that, but I'm actually not that fond of a special district, especially two reasons. Three, create another government entity that also takes all of this out of our realm and puts it into the county board of commissioners exclusively. There's a way to do that so that we could, I mean, a big huge portion of this, probably the majority of it, is in the city of Eugene, so I would want to be able to see if there's some kind of hybrid potentially that where we could still be participating in the decisions around this. And then, and then finally, another problem with it is the potential for compression because of Measure 5 and how that would affect other things that the general government wants to do beyond this. So that's not my favorite solution, absolutely against the privatization of the service as well, I don't think that's the way to do it. So that's kind of where, where my thinking is right now.
And Counselor, just the, on the taxing district piece, we did not get into what governance would look like, it was just merely looking at the mechanism of what could it produce.
And AAS, under special purpose district, this type of entity would be governed by the Lane County Board of Commissioners, too.
That was just an example, but it certainly wouldn't have to be that way. I mean, that's, that's something, if we were directed to go down that road and get more information, we could certainly find out what the legal requirements would be to address some of those concerns. And again, I'm just trying to present the information back, I'm certainly not recommending one way or the other.
Okay. So let's see if it is possible to have a special district that could have city council participation in it and the decision-making. I looked at the matrix that's attached in B, that that didn't pop out at me as abundantly clear whether or not that was an option.
And nobody had, do you have any?
I think we're talking about two different kinds of districts. One is a county service district where the board of commissioners would be the elected officials to oversee it and the other is a, I'm forgetting the title, a special service district where the oversight is by an elected group of officials who are not the board of commissioners. And I think Western Lane works that way, if my memory is correct.
Alan, were you able to hear that?
Uh, most of it.
Okay. It was just, I, what Jerry just said is it's possible that you could, it doesn't have to be a county commissioner form of oversight.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Okay. George Polling?
Well, like Mike, I too think our top priority should be police and fire EMS services and without an influx of more general fund money and/or the willingness of elected officials and budget committees to step up and make it a priority, I think we're kind of stuck. You know, the do nothing, I understand what you're saying, the do nothing is not acceptable to me without the willingness, like I said, to step up and make it a priority or, and/or the influx of some additional funds. I'm not real thrilled with the privatization because of the results that, you know, aren't that good for the consumer. So I guess forming the ambulance transport district is the only way to look at it, but then again, I'm not real excited about making people pay any additional taxes, but at least they'll get the vote on it if that's, if that was the route that we were to take if we go to a special fire district. I'm glad I don't have your job. You know, on this, on this matrix that Alan was referring to, it's the overview of selected alternatives for funding ambulance services, the intergovernmental agreement, it doesn't create any new revenues, doesn't take an election, it isn't affected by the comprehensive plan and the existing elected bodies are the governing body. Is there something wrong with that? Is it the funding, is it, makes that the, a no deal on that?
There's no additional funding that comes with it under that model. Basically, the IGA is the model we're operating the functional consolidation under right now and where that's produced, hasn't produced new revenue, it's produced savings because we are sharing positions and some functions.
So it's either an influx of general fund money to the fire EMS service or some kind of a special taxing district that will be up to the voters to decide. That looks like the only two options that we've got right now, or just continue on and hope something doesn't, you know, something major doesn't happen and, I don't know, like I said, I'm glad I don't have your job.
Betty?
If we have a special district, could the city council be the governing body?
That would be a legal question.
Yes, I'm looking at the attorney there.
Counselor Taylor, I don't know for sure, but I believe the answer is no. That is, the city is the city in the special district, we don't create the special district, the voters do. So I don't think there's a mechanism to have it structured so that the.
But if the district were contiguous with the city, I mean.
Pardon?
If the district were contiguous with the city.
It's, it is still a district, it's not, it's not a city of Eugene creation. At least that's as I understand it so far.
We could take a look at that, though, and get more information back from all of you, it sounds like that's a question.
I'm very concerned about special districts because you have people elected, maybe, but people, the populace doesn't pay much attention to the election and usually doesn't know who the people are, so it just removes government further from the people, I think. And that's my, a big concern about a special district. Also, they have special taxing abilities. I lived in a community where we had all kinds of districts and there was a park district, there are good things about that, but also nobody knew who was the, who was the government of that park district except some legal and voters people. And hardly anybody voted for them because they didn't know who was running. It was just something people didn't keep charge of. I think ideally, this money should come out of the general fund, but obviously, we would have, we have to find more sources of revenue before we have it. Thank you.
I've got Mike and George Polling in the queue, I just want to ask a question. So if, if you ask the voters, do you want this special district and do you want it, council to appoint the directors of it, is that a way that, I mean, it would still be under control of the, of the public, but they would be saying how they would go about putting it together? Then you would have some avenue for, conduit of elected responsibility back to the council. Anyway, something for you to look at.
We'll take a look.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, I was just going to kind of go down that road, too, and explore the governance stuff that gives me heartburn, is what I mentioned in the first place, isn't it? As they're two legitimate public bodies, you'd have to have elected officials to govern each of them and as I understand Oregon law, elected officials can't hold two positions at one time and so legally, they would be, they would have to be elected as board members of the special district and elected city councilor at the same time. So by law, I don't understand how they could both serve that entity. So it would have to be a separate board and my challenge is that, as near as I understand it, the fire department is the oldest service in, in the city of Eugene and I'm not certain I think it should start being run by someone else. So I prefer that that were, to maintain itself as a city service. So, I mean, I understand that working together with Springfield in the model we're doing is intelligent and it saves money and it's a smart way to go and it works really well and I think that's a great idea. But to create that special district is to take it sufficiently out of the hands of the city in a way that leaves me uncomfortable. That's, I think voters expect that that's our job to an extent. And so that's why, you know, I make those comments, I don't know how you work out a governance model that gives us any authority in the department at all, once you create a district. And that, that's kind of a problem for me and even if you could do it, what you're then in essence doing is just creating a levy for the fire department. I mean, if you have the same governance model of the city council running the body and, you know, all you're doing with the special district is adding a new tax that goes specifically dedicated to the fire and so essentially, you're just adding, it's a kind of a backdoor way of adding a levy. And that's why it gives me heartburn to go down that, that road. I, I think we have, at least to a certain degree, even though this is a difficult issue, we all don't know how to handle it, we all kind of sense that this is a core issue, this is one where, you know, if there aren't good options, certainly we have a duty to look at it as a, as a first priority in the general fund, that's my perspective, so.
George Polling?
So what we're talking about then is just specifically ambulance service, not the entire fire EMS system, just the ambulance service, is that correct?
For the purpose, Counselor, for the purpose of this discussion and what the task force wrestled with and the fire district concept did creep in in the, in the dialogue, the problem was the task force was targeted towards ambulance transport, so they, they backed away from that piece. But for this discussion, yes, this was, the third option was the ambulance transport district, which would be a funding mechanism exclusively.
So then the city would still be running the fire department, but not the ambulance service. So then the other problem I'm, I'm looking at is the county, correct me if I'm wrong, the county board of commissioners, they set up the ambulance service, the ASAs, the ambulance service?
Yes, sir, by ORS, they have the authority to establish the ambulance.
So then if we were to just make an ambulance service area, or we would have to petition the county to make an ambulance service area just for the city of Eugene then? They'd have to restructure the entire, the entire Lane County ASAs in order to just give us our own little ambulance service area, is that correct?
Well, the intent, when we pulled this task force together, we were trying to look at an area larger than just city of Eugene because the three largest ASAs, ambulance service areas, are the two cities and Lane Rural Fire Protection District. And we're in and out of each other's jurisdictions on automatic aid every day, multiple times. And so we were trying to look at what is the mechanism to fix this. Plus, I would submit that we are already a regional provider, we also serve five fire protection contract districts that bring in about 1.6 million a year into the city's general fund. So those are areas that we're covering as well. The thought behind the taxing district piece as originally commissioned by the fire defense board, which are all the jurisdictions in Lane County, was trying to find a funding mechanism, more than running the ambulance service itself, more of a pass-through.
So then, to form an ASA that was specific to the city limits, I don't think is even logistically workable as well as financially workable, so perhaps, I don't know, I'll just pass it down.
Yes, and our ASA extends far beyond the city limits.
Betty? Want to wrap it up? Betty?
I'll pass, thanks.
Okay. Alan, did you have anything else you wanted to add to this conversation before we close out?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, well, I don't know how helpful that was, Chief, but you got us thinking about it, so everybody needs to keep thinking about this.
Right, and we'll gather the information that you all are requesting and continue the conversation. I want to, again, congratulate Chief Groves and the work that his team is doing to stabilize the ambulance transport fund with the one-time infusion of dollars from the general fund and the work that they're doing to lower costs. I mean, at least it looks like we have a stable situation through the end of FY14, hopefully. hopefully.
We believe so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Great job.
All right. That's it for today.
Fingers crossed. Yes.